He's. I don't even know what I can say Denise, but anyways, Mayor's not here, I guess I'll be leading the discussion, but tonight's just a discussion, so we won't be doing a formal meeting until 7 o'clock, but we're just here to talk about our current city of Estacada Council rules. If we wanted to make any amendments, any changes, maybe adopt some of the rules if they're a little outdated. Maybe especially right now in the digital age where we might have to do a lot more remote meetings, update those, and thank you so much Denise and city staff for including, for examples for us, the rules from the League of Oregon Cities Council rules, examples from the city of Kaiser, city of Tuolleton, city of Ontario, and the city of Staton. So those are just some really great examples for us to use, and I guess I will let someone else kind of kick off discussion. If you have anything that you wanted to bring up tonight. Anyone? Have any ideas?
So what staff is looking for is hopefully you guys have looked at these and maybe saw something you want to add or looked at ours and seen something you want to remove or change. We wanted to kind of have a discussion so Sadie can put something together from this informal discussion for a future council meeting to under council discussion with some kind of proposed changed document. So just go ahead and blurt out if you have something.
I guess I'll start unless anyone has anything else. I've got plenty of ideas. I just kind of wanted to start with someone else if they had any ideas that they wanted to start with first.
I have a quick question. Was there an impetus for this topic or how did we land on this topic for our workshop?
It came up a few meetings ago that the council wanted to look at the rules and felt like there were some, especially about rules with so much virtual stuff going on. And so we felt like this is a more relaxed setting to have it in where we can talk and like I said, then bring it to the more formal setting after we get some ideas of what you guys are looking for as a council.
Well, see, and that's the thing is that nothing is formally being proposed during this meeting. This meeting is really meant to be just an open discussion where we can talk to each other about our ideas. And if we tend to agree on a certain direction that we want to go to, then we'll wrap it up into a formal proposal that we'll propose at the next council meeting as an actual agenda item and we'll formalize it at that time. Today's just for us to talk. I guess one thing that I'll start with is that I've had a lot of people approach me, especially as we've moved over to Zoom, about the black screen. I equate the black screen as to kind of a call-in and that's how I've been talking to the people who have been approaching me about it. But at the same time, the question kind of then becomes, well, when did we allow call-ins? Because while our charter doesn't say that it's not particularly allowed, it also doesn't say that it's prohibited. So I guess the question is moving forward, do we want to allow that? Denise, I really appreciate the examples that you included because in two of them that I saw, and I'm sorry I didn't take notes, this is kind of going mostly from memory, but I know in Tuolleton and I think either Ontario or Staton, in two of them at least, it says that a call-in is acceptable, but no more than one meeting in a row. Like you cannot call in twice in a row. You can call in once if you need to, but then you have to actually physically be there for the second meeting. I'm just going to read to you guys from the city of Kaiser, which is included in your packet. Under their attendance duty, that would be section 3.9 of their council rules, basically talks about when excused absences are. And then it goes on to say telephonic, video, or internet electronic attendance does not ensure that all testimony, discussions, staff information, and deliberations are available fully and equally. Therefore, unless allowed as set forth, methods of attendance other than personal onsite attendance shall not be considered in attendance. And a council member may not vote unless physically present at the meeting. Just for the reasons set forth in that example right there, I actually think that's a good point. The other thing that it's kind of doing is it's denying our citizens the opportunity for them to see their representatives representing them. One thing I will say in particular is that as a person, I believe in the 100% rule where if we apply it to one person, we have to apply it equally across the board. If we were to say it's okay for one of the members of our council to have a dark screen during the meeting, then how would it feel to that citizen watching in on our meetings if they had 100% black screens? That really wouldn't be fair to them if they saw 100% black screens. So how is it fair if they see one? That's kind of how I see it as a person. That's how I've had a lot of other people express it to me as people as well. Like I said, these examples of other cities that believe the same ways for the same reasons, I think is a good enough example for us to really consider putting something a little bit more formal in our own bylaws and our own council rules. So I'll open it up to discussion. Don't make me call on you one by one, please.
Well, I don't even think it's really an issue with us. I mean, it's not something that happens every meeting. So I don't even think it's something we need to address.
Jerry, I like that point. It doesn't happen every meeting. You're absolutely right. Out of curiosity, how many meetings do you think that that's okay to happen per year?
Well, it hasn't been an issue, so. You know, I don't believe that it is an issue. So like I said, I don't even think this is something. There's other stuff that we could be discussing. But again, like I said, I don't think it's an issue.
Thank you, Jerry. So I'm actually, I didn't call this meeting. I want that said. I didn't call for this workshop today. I know that there's a lot of other discussions we should be having. And I would really like to see us meeting again someday soon for our after-action review as it relates to the Riverside fire and the Doughty fire. That being said, let's go ahead and actually look at our own council rules. Because I do have a quick question for city staff while we're on the topic of our own council rules. Under our very first page of City Estacada Council Rules and Procedures, it says that we can call special emergency meetings at any time by the consent of all members of the council. Out of curiosity, we never had a special meeting during the Riverside fire event. Is there a reason that during the most major disaster our city has faced, we didn't call a special emergency meeting as a city council?
I did not have any requests for an emergency meeting from anybody. So we didn't put it out there.
Would that be the council would be the ones requesting the meeting, like the mayor or requesting all of us get together? Is that?
Usually there's a request from a counselor. It doesn't have to be the mayor for a special emergency meeting. And then we get ahold of everybody and get that approval.
And does that have to be initiated by the council or the mayor? Could that be initiated by staff if you knew of something that we needed to get together? Do we have that operationally somewhere, how those get called?
Yeah, I don't think a staff has ever called one before, but we certainly, you know, I guess if we felt like there should be a meeting coming up too, we could contact the mayor and ask him if he wanted to call a meeting. And then if he said okay, then we would go out and get the approval of everybody else. The mayor is usually staff's contact for something like that.
I did want to go back to the previous topic, just real quick. Just to throw another voice into the conversation. I'm looking down because I'm reading this stuff on my iPad. So I'm paying attention. I'm just trying to do, how many screens can you get going at one time? I would urge us to consider the difference between equal and equitable when looking through what we want to ask for demand of folks when it comes to technology and the space that we're in. I do think it's an interesting proposal about, you know, not more than one or two call-in meetings in a row. I could see where that might be something that would be interesting. But I haven't heard from a bunch of folks and I don't know that it's a huge issue. But I would just urge you, as those conversations do continue, to make sure we're not putting up any barriers for folks who may want to be able to participate but can't, given a certain technological situation that they may be in or internet speed or something along those lines. I do think it does become interesting once we go back to in-person and how that would change or what the different set of rules would be for when we're in in-person meetings versus these virtual meetings. And then the other thing that I feel like is tangential that also is, would this also apply to our community who is giving testimony or giving public hearing comments? And would we want to apply the same set of expectations to those folks? I think if you go down that path, then you really get into an equity conversation. So I just would encourage that to be part of the conversation moving forward.
I actually wholeheartedly agree with you, Kimberly. I don't think that, I'm looking, or I don't think anyone else really is looking for any of these rules to apply to the public themselves. Especially when you talk about, you know, equality and equity and what we have available to us technology-wise. I think making ourselves more available to the public is definitely what we're all trying to achieve here. But I think that's, again, what I'm trying to achieve too, is that I'm trying to make us more accessible to the public, more right there for them to see. Again, going back to that equity lens, 100% rule, if you're going to apply a rule to one of us, you have to kind of apply that rule across the board. And I know, I don't think you were a lot of our council meetings before when we were holding them in person, Kimberly, but there were actually quite a lot of meetings and it was not just one counselor in particular. It was a tool that we exercised with a lot of our counselors where they would call into someone's, one of the staff member's cell phones and then they would put the microphone up to that cellphone. But in a setting like that, I understand people have lives. I have a life myself. I have two small kids. I have a job full-time. I have this, that, and the other thing going on too. But when you are a part of a council meeting where the decisions you are making have the power to actually affect people's lives, the ability for the people to see you there knowing that you are digesting the information, that you are listening to the city staff give the presentations in front of you, really can be very important to people when you talk about the decisions we're making for their lives. Really having our faces be there, showing them that we're paying attention and that we're dedicating our time to this and our 100%, again, undivided attention, I think is really important. How do you feel from you really today about this?
Can I say one thing real quick there and we'll jump over to Paul? Yeah, I totally agree with that. I do just want to point out that applying the exact same rules to everybody, that's being equal. That's not the same as equity. And maybe we need to have a conversation on discussions, but I think that would also help once we get farther along, understanding the difference between equal and equity.
Well, and going back to your point about technology, if we apply these rules to the counselors, we do provide them with the tools to actually meet the rules of, or the necessity of having the technology of our iPad. I mean, when we represent the city, we're given the tools to be able to represent them electronically as well. So just keeping that in mind as part of this discussion. Paul, I would love to hear your thoughts.
Sure, thanks. Just thinking, and we're talking mainly the appearance on video versus black screen. You know, that's what we're talking about at this moment, right?
As of today, yes, but I'm also really hoping that we can narrow down what the word present or an attendance means as it relates to our city rule or our council rules. That way, we don't have to go back and have this discussion once we start having in-person meetings again. It'd be nice not to have this kind of workshop more than once, right? Let's kind of fix the problem now so we don't have to go back and do it again.
The only people that I've heard from on the black screen issue, they've been, they could go either way on it. So I've not heard any real sense of urgency that this is something that they truly care one way or the other on. I understand what you're saying though. It's nice to have people on screen. And I was thinking if we could state something like the preference would be that we would be present on screen. I think that would be fair, but I think we said in the council meeting where we discussed this before, someone brought up a good point that there are instances where someone may not be able to be on screen. So we don't want to be so black and white on this that we don't allow for some flexibility with this as well too. Should someone be out of town or need to call in, something along those lines.
I completely agree. In fact, I think it was Tuolleton. Denise, do you remember which one it was that actually said like, we prefer you to be in person? So when I was talking about that exception where like you can call into a meeting, but you can't call into two in a row, that was in two of these. And Denise, do you remember which one? You're muted. Denise is muted.
You're muted, Denise. I don't remember which one it would have been, but when we get your guys' notes compiled, then we can in ours insert things and the different types of wording from different ones. So you guys can look at those as you're making your decisions. But we'll find those and from our notes, we'll get those put in there so you guys can talk about them.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the really good example of exactly what Paul was talking about with that flexibility of like understanding that it might happen once or, you know, every so often, but try not to do that kind of thing. Maybe it was Staton. I mean, you guys have them in front of you too, don't you?
No. Okay, I'm eating.
On a side note, we could probably remove the word facsimile from sharing of minutes and things in there. We can clean that up for Estacada.
So I think that a lot of the stuff that was in that volunteer manual that was thrown in our packet a couple of weeks ago, I think some of that was probably more relevant to here too. Did anyone see anything out of that package that they wanted to have included over here?
Katie, I did find that. And it does say attendance at meetings must be in person by telephone or other electronic means where the person's voice may be heard. The preference of the council is for all members of the council to attend in person. And the next one says a member of council should not attend by telephone or other electronic means where the person's voice may be heard more than two consecutive meetings. A member of council appearing by telephone or other electronic means where the person's voice may be heard should remain present for the entire meeting unless it's a result of a malfunction or technical issue out of control of the counselor. So there's some good wording where it also has the preference, but also limits how many you can attend by telephone or by voice. Really not, it says electronic where only your voice is heard. So that's what we're talking about.
Sorry, why? Yeah, I mean, for me, that makes logical sense and we don't really have anything in our current rules that gives any direction about that.
Right, we don't.
I guess I'll bring up the other elephant in the room who wants to talk about what to add in terms of social media.
Did anybody also attend the social media event for the League of Oregon Cities, the conference, the workshop they put on?
I did. Yeah, I listened in on that too.
I thought that had some pretty interesting stuff. But I feel like that's more guideline than a hard and fast rule. I did like the fact about whenever you are stating something on social media, very clearly stating either you are representing your state or you're not. I feel like that is something that could be reiterated or made a little bit stronger. Because right now it just talks about, I think, speaking to the press or in public, but I think adding social media would be a good spot for that.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
I was just going to ask, what are they getting at there? Are they saying that we got to be clear whether we're representing ourselves or whether we're representing the council?
Yeah, you're speaking on behalf of only yourself and not of this, or you are speaking on behalf of the city one way or the other. And make sure that however you're represented, you know, would say Councilman Paul Strobel, or what did you say, Paul Strobel?
Right. Yeah, I think that'd be some good clarification to have.
And that seemed to be the going theme. That pretty much all of them that referred to social media in their council rules said something along the lines of the counselors when they're on social media are representing themselves, specifically that they're not to speak on, you know, or speak on behalf of the council when on social media. And I think it would be really important for us to put something in our rules that say that too. Jerry, how do you feel about it?
Well, I'm looking at the city of Kaiser. Trying to scroll back to it. I had to scroll up to see what city it was. But I like where they said, I'm almost there. I think I scrolled this far, but I must have. All right, section 18 on Kaiser, electronic mail and social media. I like the section or number four in that section. All email social media used by counselors shall use city accounts only when acting in council's elected roles. No discussions or issues involving city business shall take place on non-city email social media accounts. This is required to be able to accurately archive these communications for public record purposes. The one above it says email social media may not be used to discuss policy issues with a quorum of the council. That's a no-brainer. But, you know, I think that any discussion when it comes to council business, you know, from your own page or pages, I just don't like that whole. I'm really, I don't know. I don't like it. I don't think we should be talking about council business or talking about other counselors. And I know that I've been guilty of it and I'm working, I'm not going to do it anymore. But yeah, that's kind of how I feel. I just think that any statements about city business or other counselors doesn't belong there. So yeah, that's all I got. I really liked that section from Kaiser though.
So I think the most important takeaway from the points that you just pointed out in section 18, Jerry, is that counselors probably should not be discussing city business with each other on each other's pages. What I will say about social media is that it can be either useful.
No, I don't think the council should be discussing city business with anybody on social media. Not just each other, with anybody. City business, we shouldn't be discussing city business on social media with anybody.
I appreciate that perspective, Jerry. And I realize that I myself hold a page that I dedicate especially for the council business. What I will say is that I am a person and have my own methods of talking to people. And unfortunately, as city counselors and Estacada, we don't have offices that we can meet with the public and to discuss any issues if they wanted to, if they wanted to meet with us as the representatives. Being accessible to them through social media sometimes is the easiest and most convenient way for people to reach out to the people that represent them. Having a way of expressing someone's experiences in their local government is a tried and true tradition, I would say. People used to do it in publications and they would do it in formal and informal settings. Unfortunately, our world today kind of relies on social media. I don't think that it would be fair for any person to say that you cannot discuss your own business as it relates to you. Now, I think that we're all following the basic laws of no slander, no defamation, no making up stories, stand behind what you say. But I think that having some rules in our bylaws about social media is healthy. That being said, I think I'm looking at, oh, it's so hard to tell anymore.
I will ask the city of Kaiser if their council has a social media page that is a city social media page. I'll ask them if they have that.
I'd be interested in that as well too. And I'm kind of siding with, I like what you're both saying there on this. I can see the not having the quorum, not using the social media to discuss with other counselors. But to me, social media is a good way to get out issues, especially in a small town like this. It's hard to get issues out other than social media. Since we have a weekly newspaper, no real dedicated radio station, no dedicated TV, anything like that. It's, to me, it's a useful tool.
And maybe Sadie can speak to this, but it is important that if you have a social media page, like I'm not sure what we're doing with Katie's, that is, it needs to be backed up with the city backup and we need to be able to recover all that information for requests for informations, anything that's city, you know, related. So that is one thing, that's why I'm going to ask Kaiser how they do that. If they give the counselors a page and that this backed up at the city so they have all that information.
Yeah, because I could see that getting to be really messy if, you know, someone does a public records request and it blurs over onto your personal page and then your personal page has to be opened up to a public records request.
Yeah, so right now we have something called Archive Social that automatically backs up all of our city, you know, Instagram, Facebook page, our website. And we have like 10 accounts. So if we could do that, where we would, you know, just add Katie's page, that would be one easier way.
Or any other counselor, yeah. I think that's a great way to move forward because, I mean, it's Katie today. It could be, you know, I mean, we have an election right now. We have three people running for election. If they get their seat and they choose to make their own Facebook page, or if any of the three counselors sitting before me want to make their own Facebook page, I think that archiving it through the system you already have set up would be perfect. I'm just going to read to you from Tuolleton's really quick use of social media that I very much agree with. Members of council are encouraged to exercise caution when commenting on municipal affairs on social media platforms. While using social media, members of council are subject to applicable Oregon laws as they pertain to public meetings and public records retention schedules. That's exactly what we just said, which is perfect. Let me see. City council members will refrain from posting comments that express a council or committee position prior to a city or committee determination, or I'm sorry, council or committee determination of a position or on a matter that would otherwise require council or committee authorization prior to the conveyance of a position. Or express an opinion in a manner contrary to Rule 8, which is statements to the media and other organizations above, basically saying that you're representing your own opinion and not the opinion of the city or the city council. So I think that's a really, really great start.
Katie, what page is that? Can you give me the page?
Oh, I'm looking at Tuolleton. Yeah, so I'm looking at Tuolleton, page 28.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So yeah, I love that. I don't think that we should be so restrictive as to limit anyone, including any of the seven. including any of the seven members of this council. I don't think that we should limit their free speech, but I think that we should definitely exercise caution and make sure that we're following all the applicable rules.
Is it clear um, the accountability mechanism if that is not followed? Like, how, what does that look like? Is that written somewhere? Do we have an idea of how that, that gets handled?
Do we have a? Censure in our policy? I don't think we do. I didn't see a censure in our policy. Did you guys?
I didn't, which made it interesting for, I mean, not gonna apply to any of these rules. It would be good though to have a clear, transparent stated process if someone has, has a complaint or feels a censure is necessary.
I saw censure and removal in a couple of them.
What, what is censure? What would that, how would that look?
I think it's like a, a formal warning, but you know, like a step before a full-on recall.
It's like a disciplinary hearing. Basically, an executive session would be held and you would talk to the counselor about what they did wrong and what you're gonna do to essentially punish them. If you're giving them a warning, if they're, we're gonna adopt a, like a three-strike rule or something. But um, I've never actually seen any cities really exercise that on a regular basis. Have you Denise? I mean, how often are counselors really censured and removed without being recalled by the voters? Denise, you're still muted. Denise, you're muted.
I have never seen that, but I know it wouldn't be a, a, uh, executive session because anything with council is not, is not allowed. You have to do it in open session, but I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
Even if it's a disciplinary hearing? I mean, if there was a disciplinary hearing for like uh, you know, I mean, like when we do your review?
An employee, yes, but I don't think city council falls under that. But I could look at that. I just, I've always been under the impression that uh, that would not be in, anything with um, council is not executive session, but I'll look at that. But we, there are some censorship um, and rules in some of these other ones that we'll look through and bring, we'll put that in so you guys can discuss that. I have it as one of my things.
I noticed our attendance rule, uh, it looks like the one from the League of Oregon Cities, but it's also pretty lax compared to the other ones. Let me see, uh, I think it's actually in our, I think it's in our municipal code, actually. Denise, do you know if it's in our municipal code versus our city council rules? I think it is. Basically, the one that says um, someone has to be vacant from the city for sixty days or absent from the city business. That, that's in our charter, okay. Is that something that? I mean, do we feel like sixty days is enough or too long?
Enough for what? What is, what is this one for?
Well, how would, how would you feel if we had a city counselor who was gone from the city for sixty days and then came back and was like, hey, I want my seat back? Or do you think that it should be thirty?
Or something that wasn't discussed ahead of time or something along those lines? I think that'd be pretty odd for something like that happening.
I think I saw it was like sixty days that was unexcused. But then that also plays into kind of um, the, the call-in function or whatever role around that too.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess we're gonna go back to the call-in thing. Are, are, are we just having Denise and other city staff look at developing a rule? What is the rule we're looking at, you guys? Trying to have open discussion.
What, kind of switch gears there.
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. I guess I'm trying to keep the ball rolling in this conversation.
Hey, just real quick, uh, interruption. Does anybody know of any new wildfires closed? Because I'm getting messages about KXL saying that the highway is closed near Estacada because of a wildfire.
Uh, the highway was closed because of um, a motorcycle accident. There was a motorcycle accident a couple hours ago at two-twenty-four, but it looks like they've opened it since then.
Okay, yeah, I just got three, three text messages asking about new wildfire out here. So um, just, uh, I just wanted to ask that real quick. Thank you.
So, so the, the charter says absence from the city for thirty days without council consent or from all council meetings within a sixty-day period.
So that would even be sixty days excused, is that right?
Well, absence from, without council consent. Yes, I would think so because it says right in that sentence, without council consent or from all council meetings within a sixty-day period.
Okay, so it sounds like we have it addressed.
Well, okay, so Paul, you weren't a part of the council back when, at the beginning of this year, we had a council workshop, um, our beginning of the year workshop. It came up that uh, last year, we had some counselors that only had a fifty percent attendance record. And that's not a lot, uh, fifty percent. But they were doing it in a way that they, that it wasn't against our city charter because they would be on one week and then off the other and then on one week and then off the other. And their attendance record was fifty percent because they did that every time. I guess I'm kind of asking if we're okay with that.
And, and I guess what I, um, you know, what staff would like to know? How do you want, I mean, because a, a counselor will call us and say they aren't gonna be here. And sometimes they don't offer anything. They just, they aren't gonna be here or, you know, the mayor or counselor. So how should that procedure work? Because all we do is then inform the mayor and say so-and-so is not gonna be here. But I don't know if we should be more, I mean, I was a basketball coach for years and years. So we had a rule, two unexcused absences and you were off the team. And getting your haircut wasn't an unexcused absence or going to a concert or going to a birthday party because we put our schedule out three, three months in advance. And so what does excuse mean? I mean, no, in, in old, olden days, most of the time counselors at the meeting before they were gonna miss would say, I have to be out of town because my daughter's getting married or something and I won't be at the next meeting. And all the council would say, sure, you know? And, and we haven't had that for a while. So, you know, staff is kind of caught because you, when someone calls and doesn't offer anything up, we, it's hard for us to feel like we can push them. Well, why? You know, but um, um, I'm not saying that people are, are doing stuff that they don't have to do to not come to a meeting. But how does the council, maybe that's something that the council needs to talk about? And that if there is the opportunity, that if they know they're gonna be absent at the next meeting, to bring it up at the previous meeting at the end, say why they can't be there, or even if they just say for personal reasons. And then the council then has the opportunity to say, okay, instead of just staff saying, okay.
I guess that would go back to-
Well, and when it comes to-
I was just, from a preference standpoint, um, I mean, that would be preferred, but you know, with the, the recognition that things will come up, they could, they could keep someone from coming in. But yeah, I would say that could be preferred.
Yeah, that, that would be the preferred thing is so they knew ahead of time. But yeah, certainly things come up.
And things do, and that's what the, like, the two unexcused absences are for kind of thing. What, I mean, going back to what Denise was saying, basketball puts out their, their schedule months in advance. Well, as counselors, we all pretty much know that the second and fourth Mondays of our lives are dedicated to this. Again, things happen. I'm not discounting that. But at the same time, if at the end of the year, you end up with someone who has fifty percent attendance record, when, I mean, in a lot of months, we don't even meet twice a month. Uh, I think December and November, we only meet once, right?
Yeah, you normally.
Yeah, so we've got twenty-two meetings a year. Yeah, so we've, we've only got twenty-two meetings a year, really, on a normal year. And so for someone to miss-
And it is interesting because we've had years in the past, we've gone ten years and no one's missed a meeting. And then there'll be, Katie is right. It seems like the last few years, there have, have, you know, there's been an issue with it, that there's been a lot of meetings. But now I'm looking at the council we have, at least now, and I don't see that happening as much with this council. And um, but you just never know. You just never know.
Well, and that's the thing, is that this council is doing so much better than last year's council when we had other members of the group that were really doing that on a regular basis. But what I will say is that, again, moving forward, we are in the middle of an election. We have an election in a week from tomorrow. We're gonna get, you know, three people elected and I realize one of them is probably sitting with us. But at the same time, i- in the future, we wanna have, we don't wanna have to go back to these rules and amend them again because maybe we run into another council a few years down the line that is exercising their, you know, every other time, I'll get away with it kind of thing. And really, what is that doing that doesn't help anybody? And it's really not fair to the rest of the counselors who um, maybe do dedicate their, their Mondays to it and then they show up to a meeting and, oh, there's not a quorum. Um, and that has happened actually once, didn't it Denise? Where we, I think it has happened once in the last couple of years where people who set aside time to be there, show up and there's not a quorum, so we have to leave. And that's not fair because we set aside time.
So since I did take a look at the city charter and it says, it, you have to have council consent. I guess what maybe we can do is just be more diligent when someone is absent, that that comes up at the start of the meeting and the council actually gives their consent, that, that, that person, even though they're gone already, the council would then give their consent that this was a, a-
That's a hard one to do though, because we would want, we want some of the issues, we, what the facts were and, you know, it's hard to give consent just-
Right.
Just having somebody gone.
Especially with HIPAA violations out there, you know? Well, why are they not here? Well, they're sick. Oh yeah, what kind of sick? You know? Even by saying someone is sick, I don't even know if you can do that with HIPAA laws that are out there. And I understand what Paul's saying. That would be really hard to-
Yeah.
To track for, for us. But I don't know. I mean, how do you feel about?
Katie, you'd mentioned that this came up. Katie, you'd mentioned this came up earlier than the year at the, the council meeting. What, what was discussed then was, was it just that this is an issue? We need to address it down the line? Or was any, any thresholds established?
Well, well, so I had reached out to Denise and said, hey, I'm, I'm having people reach out to me because people have, they're, I'm easy to reach out to. They reach out to me and they were complaining about the black screens. And it was pretty early on into our, our Zoom meetings. Or maybe not early on, but it was after enough time had passed that our Zoom meetings were, you know, kind of the new norm and people were realizing this is how our city councils are at the moment. And they were coming to me and saying, hey, I don't appreciate the counselors that have dark screens. And I have myself had dark screens also in the past. I've actually um, made a decision on public record while using a dark screen. But uh, but after talking to people who expressed concern to me about seeing dark screens, I, I realized that they might have a point. Um, and then when Denise, you know, provided examples of uh, of other council rules that are in Oregon that say, hey, being in person would be really important. I mean, I, I'm not here to pick on anyone, but at the same time, we, if people want us to have this kind of discussion and make these kind of rules and we need to talk about them, I'm just trying to talk to people about, I'm trying to talk to you guys about it.
Yeah, I, I guess I thought we were talking about though uh, unexcused absences or absences completely as opposed to just in-person, not in-person. And, and if it's, if it's excused absence, unexcused, it seems like we've got that sixty-day rule in there of unexcused or, you know, or, or missing out of, out of the, away for sixty days. You know, that's good, but then there's the loophole of being able to show up for one council meeting and not the other. I wonder if we could establish or have some discussion around establishing a threshold if they've missed, I don't know, twenty-five percent, thirty-three percent of the meetings over the course of the year. You know, then, then, you know, who knows what? You know, some action would need to be taken at that point. And we don't need to decide that now, but it seems like something we could discuss down the line as well, too.
Well, so I think we're trying to have the discussion now, but Jerry, do you want to say something? Kimberly?
Um, I wonder, I think this is great. And I think like, there should be some kind of threshold so we can avoid that every other meeting debacle for non, for complete non-attendance. But I wonder like, how much of this do we need to put in our rules? And how much of this, would that be a reason for, you know, our community to bring us that question? You know, I've noticed this counselor hasn't been at the meet. Like, does it need to be a rule for the community to be able to bring it up, to up to us as a concern? Or can, I mean, I, I, I just don't know how big of an issue this is for, for, for folks. And so that's where I guess, when we would talk about it more at a council meeting, we'd hear from people on it a bit more. I think, yeah, the fifty percent of not attending a meeting at all, um, there's gotta, yeah. There's gotta be something there.
Thank you for saying that, Kimberly.
Oh, sorry.
Huh?
I also wonder how many of these discussions would be better had, knowing that you're gonna have a brand-new council soon. And so is it, you know, take all this information and rehab the discussion, you know, after the new council is sworn in? So you have a better idea of, of who you're sharing the table with?
That's a good idea. If we wanted to kind of take some of these ideas, mull them over. Um, and then at the, um, the beginning of the year council workshop that we have, you know, um, with the new set of counselors in January, maybe that should be one of our main focuses. Um, I know that there's a lot of stuff that I think we should be probably focusing on during that first workshop uh, as well. But um, but I think that if we're, if we wanted to kind of solidify the new council rules at that time. Um, I will say it was pretty frustrating as, as a person and I wouldn't have wanted to wait for a public person or a pub, a member of the public to raise the issue that, hey, did you know you have counselors who are missing fifty percent? It became an issue and, and we had to start keeping actual like tallies because it was, it was pretty bad. And it's not fair to anyone. So um, did anyone else have any ideas that they wanted to bring up as it relates to the council rules or any of the examples that city staff have provided us in our packets? Denise, did you have any um, topics you wanted us to address while we're here together?
No, but we certainly would like to hear if you think of something. Go ahead and email us. So the thing, the topics I have from tonight are the, the black screen and participation rules for Zoom or even all meetings once we go back to in-person meetings. Social media, statements to the media and other organizations. Censorship. What censor, like, or, or um, addressing if someone breaks a rule or, or that. And then at the-
Disciplinary.
Rule. And then at the end, we decided maybe we can work on these for the last couple of months of the year and adopt them after the first of the year when we have our new council on. And also by that-
I think that sounds like a-
-you guys to look at these more and be able to maybe give us some more areas where you would like it to be looked at.
There was one other place that I know had come up in previous meetings that we haven't touched on yet in this meeting. And that is related to public members addressing the council. And I know we have talked about it before, like, what are the rules around how many times someone can speak in a meeting? And it, from what it looks like, it's not around how many times someone can speak, but just once per subject. Um, and so I thought, I, I don't know how we want to, to track that or um, if anybody is tracking that, but I think that's an interesting piece to pull out of there. And I've seen in some other, um, some other ones that are in here had um, related to during public comment, council or the mayor, counselors or the mayor giving a direct response and whether or not we wanted that to happen or we wanted it to be a space where we're just listening and we're taking information in and there is no need for a direct response. And it's actually preferred that there is not a direct response given to that public comment. So I think that's another place. It's a little wishy-washy and all- So I think that's another place. It's a little wishy-washy in ours. That, that could be looked at and fleshed out a bit more on what the, what an appropriate response is, if there is one.
I think that's a good point. What are you, what are your ideas, Paul or Jerry? How do you feel about what, what Kimberly just brought up?
Yeah, I, I agree. I was looking at that one, too, when I was looking over this. You know, just given that we, the, the Zoom meetings invite more, more participation, which is wonderful. But then how to address the comments coming in, I think having some clarity on that would be helpful. You know, is it just a chance that we, we take notes and listen and then, but, but then at what point do we turn back or come back and be able to give a response as well, too? I, yeah, some clarity on that would be great.
Well, so Paul.
I basically have the same opinion that Paul just had. I mean, I, that's basically what I was thinking also, so I'll.
So I'll, I'll ask the question then, first to Paul and then to Jerry, just to kind of gauge how you guys are feeling. Do you feel like during public comment periods, it is appropriate for a mayor or a city counselor to, to sit there and listen? Or do you think that it is more appropriate for that city counselor or the mayor to then respond to the, the citizen? If that's what they are asking for, is they're asking a question and they want a response?
I think having the response, I think having the response would be good. But, you know, I also, you know, you, you can be put on the spot as well, too, for something like that. And, and you may not, you know, you may not, you may need the time to collect your thoughts a little bit better as well, too. So I honestly, I can go either way on that. If I were, if I were somebody asking a question of, of the mayor or of you, I would really want a response. I would. But in fairness to the person who's getting the question answered, you know, I don't know. Is it, is it worth it to give them time to collect their thoughts and, and come up with a more proper response? And they're, since they're kind of speaking on behalf of the council at that point.
Well, so, um, I, I like what our current city rule says that the council and mayor should avoid immediate and protracted response to the citizen comments. I know that when you're, when you're put on the spot personally, sometimes not having enough time to collect your thoughts and saying the right thing, you can get you into some trouble. I would, I would hate to see any person sitting in one of our seats to say the wrong thing because they weren't given the right opportunity to say the right thing, if that makes any sense. Jerry, how do you feel about it?
Well, I think that if, if the person who is the counselor or mayor who's being asked the question, if they actually listen to understand, not just listen to respond, I think it should be up to the, you know, their discretion, as long as they can do it professionally. And, you know, whether they want to answer that question at that point or, you know, maybe come back to it at another point. But I think it should be at that, that person's discretion, whether, you know, they want to answer just, you know, some people listen to respond, some people listen to understand. So if they can listen to understand and use their own discretion to answer, I, I think it's great getting in, getting a response out quickly. But if they're just listening to respond and they just pop off at the top of their head, then, you know, of course, no, I don't, I don't agree with it. But, you know, it's always better to, you know, have a little bit of time to think about the question and, and come back to it. If that, you know, if there's actually a, a space for that or an option for that, you know, during meetings, maybe we should have an agenda item where we can answer questions from previous meetings if, if we have the opportunity, you know, something to that effect. But I know not all of us all the time listen to understand. So, you know, in that aspect, I don't just want a gut reaction and knee-jerk response. Something thought out and, you know, a little bit more measured would be good.
Over the years, I have been in a meeting when there's been, the speaker, you know, the citizens asking questions and a counselor or mayor has spoke up and told them an answer that I sat there and knew it was wrong, but it was out there and I wasn't going to speak up and tell that person, well, you're wrong. And let it go. And they didn't give them the correct answer. They gave them an answer, so.
I do think it's also interesting to note, though, that like in the third sentence, it says, "All remarks shall be addressed to the presiding officer and not to an individual counselor, staff member, or other person." So if we are going to make space for people to be able to ask a direct question and get a direct answer, we need to change that language or put in a different spot for us to be able to do that kind of dialogue or ensure that our counselors are accessible to the community and that they do respond when they do get emails or social media, if that's the route we go. And that there's some accountability mechanism there, if we're not going to take direct questions.
I think that's definitely something we should talk about when we talk about this next. Denise, I just realized, it is 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, do we need to jump over to the council meeting?
We probably should. We probably.
Okay. Um, hey, I think it was a great discussion. Thank you, guys. I think we need to log out and jump over onto council meeting. Can we take a break, like a five-minute break?
Yeah. Yeah. Meeting and then when you guys are ready, we'll call it to order.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. We'll see you in about five minutes, you guys. Thank you.